We've been in non-public session, and so now we've come out of non-public. I will open up the regular meeting, and she's setting up the recording device. August 12th meeting on the Kingston Select Board, please join me in rising to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can you get that for me? Beautiful. Thank you. Okay. Welcome all. Let me introduce our board. To my far left is Laurie Schwett, board member; Glenn Copelman, board member and vice chair; I'm Elliot Alessio, your chair; to my immediate right is Chuck Hart, member; Peter Bakie, board member; and Susan Eyre, our administrative assistant. And we have no appointments at this time, but I will open the meeting up for public comment first time. If anyone wants us to address the board under public comment? Yes, Mr. Wyler.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'm curious.
Have a seat. Stick your name and address, and turn on the microphone right in front of you. Just put green button, and you can just leave it right on the table. That is accurate. Perfect. That works good.
Ken Wyler, here as treasurer of Gideon Lodge. Has any decision been made on our exemption that was dated from 1992?
That item is coming under Old Business tonight.
Okay. I'll wait for that.
Okay. Anyone else like to make public comment at this time?
Do you want to?
I thought we would do that afterwards.
Okay.
Before we come out. Okay. All right. First item of Old Business is the charitable exemption request from the Veterans Club at Gideon Lodge. Oh, sorry, I missed the liaison reports, even more important. I'm going to start with you, Mr. Bakie, since you can read better than I.
Well, thank you. You've been up brief about Chief Johnson, so nothing with the Police Department. And as far as the Building Department, we had an interview with a possible candidate for the Health Office's position. I actually feel like it went very well. Individual was extremely qualified, and he didn't have any issues about possibly working the 20 hours a week that was requested. And he is having a follow-up meeting tomorrow with our building inspector to talk about formalities. So a couple of fingers crossed, but I think our inspector appreciated his knowledge, and he was a retired 20-years Hampton. As a building inspector, electrical inspector, he's got all kinds of stuff in his belt. So quite a knowledgeable individual.
Thank you. And he'll be updating his -- if he comes in, he'll be updating his certifications. Yep.
Yeah, the certifications, Pedro says they basically stay with you. Some of the information he shared was his retired credentials from Hampton in 2019, but those were just credentials from Hampton. So yes.
All right. Conservation, we did meet Thursday night, and we did solve that shortfall that they had, that they were talking to us about the other night, about a couple hundred dollars. They have a working balance with over $13,000 in it, so it made sense to use that rather than try to renegotiate your own budget. So that was that, and they actually completed their budget that night, because it's not very hard to do. And they're just talking about their fall project with the trail work and stuff. It's just been too hot, and there's some going to get out and do too much there. Town Clerk, Tammy, nothing new there, just preparing for the primary, September 10th. The Fire Department, there was nothing there. Budget Committee, we're going to take a few minutes with that. The department heads are getting their budgets from Paula, which is due back by, I think, September 13th. First Budget Committee meeting to look at the overall proposed new budget is September 18th. That schedule, once it gets reposted, has changed quite a bit from the past years. We're going to meet more often with fewer committees coming in, so that when the highway comes in, it may be one night. The hours have changed from six to seven, we're going to start at seven, but it'll be just highway. So it won't go two or three hours, whatever time it's going to take. And then the smaller committees will come in, two or three or four at a time, but it's going to go from, starting, I think, October 2nd, right through up till November. So all the work gets done, it's just that they felt a little more, having a little more time with the larger department heads will, you know, work better. The other thing was, we did look at the budget the other day, and I won't bore you too badly, but at the moment, the budget is right where it should be for six and a half, seven months. The total budget percentage is like 46%, which is, you know, would be nice if it was 30%, then we'd be saving some money. But be that as it may, it's not way over. Most everybody is in line, there's a few items that'll get tweaked. The revenues seem to be in line, especially car registrations, which is what our big gain is for money, that seems to be moving right along with what it was last year. Other than that, there's no outstanding issues. We know we got budgeting issues for supplies and dues and stuff for some reason or other, they just, you know, they're all close to being over already for supplies. So the only other note is that 40,000, give or take $40,000, was transferred from the trustees of the trust fund from the Fire Department building, the leftover money that was there, is that has been, it either has been, or it's going to be transferred into the general fund, which is what we had anticipated, you know, when it first got built. And the only other interesting news, I guess, for me, was the impact fees for the school and the library at whatever date it was, have been paid directly to them. And I guess for the schools, that's what's been done in the past. For the library, it hasn't been, like the library or the Fire Department. If they have a project and they wanted to use the impact fees, they would bring it to us, and we would go through that. Now they have the money, at least up to the date that Paula, they requested for Paula. So obviously, whatever money they have, they can use for whatever they want to use for. I guess that's all, if there's any questions. But again, the budget is, once the 18th, or once we get the new budget, fill in the lines, which the department heads will do, we'll have a better, again, a better idea on the actuals to this point. But it will be a work in process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Any questions or comments? At last week's planning board, Saddleup Saloon got approval to be open for breakfast, so they expanded their hours accordingly. And that was the only hearing we had, and we meet again this week, but I don't have anything to report at this time. Glenn?
The only thing for me to update you on is just a quick update on the Grace Daily Barn. The work has been done by the contractor on the inside, the building is stabilized now. There's some additional work on the outside that our DPW department will be doing with regard to improving the drainage and stuff like that around the building. There is some exterior work to be done on the siding, and also where the L connects to the barn, to fix it so that the water gets diverted away properly and that some of the current situation gets alleviated. So we have a couple of options of how we do that, but there are a handful of capable and willing folks in town who are willing to help the DPW department with that effort, and we're going to gather some of them together next Wednesday outside the barn. Phil will be there. Phil has put together a, our DPW director has put together a schedule, as he sees it, of how the various items should be done, which ones are more important to get done in sort of a, in a sequence fashion. And so we'll be meeting as a group just to talk about that, sort of lay it out schedule-wise, and hopefully proceed to do it. And the DPW director is ready to start ordering materials for the various phases, and so hopefully there will be, you'll be seeing additional improvements and work done to further stabilize that structure.
Does it come with front stairs?
It's got a lovely step that goes into it, you know, it's all good.
For the museum, really the only thing was regarding the Boston Post cane award. Walt, I think he already spoke with you, Walt needs the cane to photograph it because he's going to create the certificate, because we're not giving the cane, right? We're just going to give a certificate with a picture of the cane, so we just, okay. So how do you want him to just contact you and he can come get it?
I can contact him tomorrow.
Okay, because he just needs to bring it over there to photograph it, and then he'll bring it back.
Okay.
And then solid waste and recycling. This Saturday, we have the paper shredding event, along with our normal cardboard, scrap metal, and glass. It is $10 for a banker's box, or three boxes for 25, is that right? We also are planning an e-waste event for September 28th, so that would be, you know, computers, you know, phones, that kind of stuff. And Susan, I don't know if Phil has solidified the date with you, but we're looking at an October 7th date for Solid Waste and Recycling Committee to present to the Select Board our data so far, and, you know, proposals moving forward. So that would be October 7th. That's all I have. Yep.
Thank you. We're all set with committee liaison reports, we move on to Old Business, and the first item is the charitable exemptions regarding the Veterans Club and Gideon Lodge. Discussion.
Have we received any information, updates from, I believe, Mr. Wyler, about some records he may have held, do you know of?
Not that I'm aware, but I can have Mr. Wyler speak, unless Mrs. Eyre wishes to speak first, or...
I haven't gotten anything new, so...
Okay. Ken?
I presented the town meeting report from '92, which you all have a copy of, and that agreement. I do not have the correspondence from 2003, which I think Susan found a place where they went into, you know, a special session, but I don't know what the result of that meeting was. That was discussing the $1,000, which shortly after that meeting, I received a refund, a rebate of the $1,000 I paid for that year, and was told not to send it anymore. But I don't have a copy of that.
We don't seem to have a record of when the agreement was rescinded or changed, you know, it just stopped.
With 22 years, 21 years, without having paid that, because of the decision I received, otherwise I would have gotten, done any notices, where's the money? So somewhere in the files from the town are the results, telling me you're tax exempt, you don't have to pay anything. Based upon a 1992 town...
I know, but that's not what happened this year. We have a new assessing firm that reviewed all our files in all organizations that were listed as tax exempt. They took the file and took the RSA that regulates what determines a nonprofit. I believe there are tax records that are submitted accordingly, and came up, because of those three documents, came up with a list of organizations in our town that have enjoyed for a number of years tax exempt status, and no longer really do not qualify, haven't qualified for a long time, but was never determined otherwise.
Well, the qualification of Gideon Lodge was not by being a charitable organization, it was an arrangement voted in at a town meeting, and it included giving an easement to make the town beach a property that was owned by the Gideon Lodge, and also acknowledged a right of way that got moved from between the church and the lodge, over between the church and, it's now the Kingston Children's. So all those things were done in exchange for tax exemption. It wasn't the claim that we were tax exempt or being charitable, it was that we had had an arrangement that was approved at a town meeting, and that was the reason. So it doesn't have to do what kind of business we're in or anything, it was a contract between the town and the Gideon Lodge.
Except that, even in your letter, you had spoken with town council, and who turned back the check to you, that's what you're telling us in your letter, I don't have any background in it. And then you said, the town council said, if you're a tax exempt, you don't need to pay this, and threw it back at you. In my estimation, that voided the whole situation, because we have nothing to back it, even though if you're tax exempt and you don't have to pay the town $1,000 in lieu of taxes, and you don't have to pay a thousand... It doesn't make any sense at all, either way you look at it.
It doesn't negate what was done by town meeting action in 1992.
But it wasn't done the same on both sides of the table. I'm one person, and I'm arguing more...
You can't overturn a town action, the town meeting, when outgoing to another town meeting.
So the only thing we have on record, then, is that $1,000 fee that they were supposed to pay.
Right.
We don't have on record the deleting the $1,000.
That's correct.
So what you're telling us, you're $21,000 in back taxes for 21 years. That's basically what you're saying.
You should be able to find the records, you're leaving me with the responsibility of finding records that should be in the town.
Well, and you...
I don't have the access to go here and through the town.
And you, believe me, Ken, it's not like we didn't go looking, it's not a matter of...
But you did, I was there, and so did the town clerk.
So the two rights don't, two wrongs don't make a right either. We've got to find...
What are the two wrongs?
I don't, we don't have the records to back it up, and neither do you.
What are the two wrongs?
Don't have the records to back up the decision not to accept the $1,000.
We have a 20-year record that I had been told, and it was in the meetings, she did find the minutes where they went public, a non-public session to discuss it, and as a result of that, I quit paying the $1,000 and was reimbursed the $1,000. Somewhere there's a, if you have the record of the checks you wrote in 2003, you might find that check. I don't have your records.
I don't think anyone's saying that you didn't give the town the $1,000 and it was returned to you. I'm not saying that didn't happen, I'm saying from that point forward, nothing happened.
You probably started putting in the charitable exemption paperwork at that point.
But to say I owe $21,000 back taxes is ridiculous.
So Susan, just as a question, did you found the minutes to where the discussion was, and then when I noticed that...
They went into non-public, I think that you were there at that meeting, there were no minutes for that non-public meeting, we don't know what happened, we just know by the tax records that...
No, I didn't know anything until I got the check back.
So you're not, like, we're looking at the old minutes?
We're trying to look at the minutes, we're looking at the tax records to see when the payment stopped.
Relevant to that particular meeting, you have no...
We don't have any...
...envelope for those minutes in it? There's no record of any minutes taken?
No, no, and there was no official change that we could find, so that's the difficulty. What we have now is that the assessor is going to look at that easement to adjust the land assessment, so she's going to do that much, but she believes that you're not eligible for the charitable exemption.
Did the assessor look at the 1992 town meeting?
She's just looking at just the title.
She's just looking at saying, not all Masonic lodges are tax exempt. Okay, I know that, but I have a special deal in the town of Kingston with this particular Masonic lodge.
But it stopped at some point, and that's the part we don't have.
It didn't stop.
It did stop when you stopped paying the $1,000.
Why did it stop? How do you overturn a town meeting action?
I think you need to go back to town meetings, see if...
No, you need a town meeting to overturn a town meeting action. The town meeting action took place in '92. The deal was made in exchange for using the beach and having a right of way, we want tax exemption.
I'd like to look at it a little bit more, to be honest with you, because I get this really, I get this really crazy feeling that that beach was owned by the San Juan Seminary, hear me out, because the daycare center used to be the basketball court for the San Juan Seminary, and the San Juan Seminary board of trustees didn't want the liability, and they turned that beach over to the town. So I don't understand how you're saying that Gideon Lodge owned that beach. So I think we still have to find out...
It's on our deed, we have three separate deeds. We had one deed that was about 100 by 100, and it was given by the family that lived up what used to be the house up the road there. And they also gave land to the town, and they also gave a right of way in between those two for the fire truck to get down to the pond and fill it up.
But that's owned by the daycare center.
That what?
That is owned by the daycare center, that right of way. Yes, it is.
So subsequently, in 1944, somebody said, you know, when the truck goes down there, it's too steep to climb out when it's full of water, we've got to change this. And I believe at the time, it was work between, for all I know, the Masons are on the board of Select, and they said, okay, we'll move it to the other side, because it's a more gradual slope. And they sketched out a right of way, but they did not record it. It was in a town meeting in 1944, this is what Ken Brinkstow, a year ago, was in a town meeting in 1944, was swapping, we'll move it from this side of the lodge to this side of the lodge. Okay. Subsequently, what is now the Kingston Children's Center was in the property of San Juan Seminary, it was closed, it was sold three or four times. And finally, with the help of the registered deeds, she went and found out, finally, one of those sketched in that right of way on the edge of that property. So Tim Lovell, who is now deceased, a registered surveyor, went and did the research, and he came up with a deed that is now online, and he's given you a copy of last month, what the paperwork gave you, showing where this is, the one in between the church and the, is no longer valid. And that was brought out when they were enlarging the church. And they, oh, they came within 20 feet of that right of way, but the right of way didn't exist anymore, it had been moved to the other side. So then, then we found that, we straightened all this out in 2012, took five more deeds to straighten everything up, and I made sure they all got recorded. I paid for them all to be recorded, so that years from now, somebody, where's the deed for that? Well, it's recorded. And the plan was made by Tim Lovell, and so it shows, this is the right of way, this is discontinued, this is the Gideon property, this is the Kingston Children's Center, this is a congregational church, and then there's deeds on all of them, including one that gives an easement to the town for the beach. That was the first time that easement was recorded officially, that was 2012, and I have a copy of that. And that was also, I can bring you that, that was also in exchange for tax exemption, or recognizing it was tax exempt. So this isn't just, oh, no, you just can't be tax exempt because you say you're charitable. No, these are arrangements and agreements that were made. So don't come back to me with, well, you're not tax exempt by this recent court decision. We were tax exempt by official actions.
Then we'll have to look into it more. I think we need, I think the board needs to talk to town council, be very honest with you, because I can't make a resolution, I know you're actually correct about town meeting rules, but it seems more complicated subsequent to that. I was probably your moderator when it happens. You want it all, you want the town to assume full responsibility, and that's not fair.
In the absence of the evidence, if you will, that the $1,000 payment requirement went away, from my perspective, the only thing I can go on is that town meeting vote, which issued a payment in lieu of taxes decision by the town, by the voters, that should have been continued until this day. And oh, by the way, the warrant article talked about an escalation based on cost of living, so there would be some ratcheting up.
And bathrooms and a life guide. That was all, that was all part of it.
Right, but as far as the, as far as the tax issue, I mean, we're talking about easements and everything, but I mean, the tax issue in my mind is, it's kind of simplistic and clear, and that is that...
So Susan found the 2003 record of putting it in non-public, whether that was a subject to be discussed.
But we don't have anything of what that discussion was.
Nothing was officially done after that.
There should have been a copy of the letter, similar to the one I got sent saying, don't send this money.
But can you produce that letter? Because we can't find it either.
So I go back to my statement, in absence of any evidence to that effect, I think that we are, I would certainly support the continuation of the payment in lieu of taxes as it was, as it was authorized by the town.
I will give you my word on the vote, that I received notice.
Okay.
Isn't that enough? And then it's up to you to find the record, that you should keep your records, you're making all the responsibility on me. When the town has the records, the town wrote the check, can you look back for checks that were written? Was one written in 2003 to Gideon Lodge? Does anybody ever, you should have a copy of that. They're asking me to have everything. And some of those things, if I gave the secretary, the secretary's, since even 2003, has been changed four times, five times. Even though I'm stuck with the treasurer job, because nobody else wants it.
And we have select boards that change every year. We're not even going into staff, so don't, you have your secretaries that change, so have we, and so has the board even more so than that. We're not going to have a resolution this evening, I think we're going to do some more chatting.
I'd like to avoid going to court on this, because I think I have the evidence enough to convince you.
And we're not looking to go to court, Ken, it's a shame on many levels, there's no question about it. I personally was horrified when I read about the Gideon Lodge in Manchester and what machinations went through in courts and all that stuff. I don't want...
You accept what these people say.
I understand that, but...
It caused a lot of turmoil in this town. I wouldn't, if I were in no position, I wouldn't have them, all they can do is come in and stir everything up and make everybody unhappy with things that have been going on for years.
You know what, no. The world is changing all around us, Ken, that's never going to stop.
That's why we make laws every year, several hundred.
Yes, and you make them without talking to the people that have to implement them, so let's not go down that road.
I'm hearing everyone tonight, and we have good records.
Thank you, Ken.
So no decision has been made?
No decision has been made, nor will be made tonight.
Nor will it be made.
No, nor will be made tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Hart.
Okay, you'll see it on the agenda again.
What's that?
You will see it on the agenda another time.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ken. The other item was the Veterans Club, and there's a letter from them as well.
We talked to them at a prior meeting, and nothing new has come up, so...
We have had no additional information.
It's just a matter of making a decision before the 29th.
I'm recusing myself from this.
Thank you. Same principles apply, they haven't met the criteria.
Have they responded at all?
No, he was here, and he did write a letter, which I think I've attached tonight again.
Yep, that's the letter.
You talked to him, I can't remember, the end of June, beginning of July. You talked to him, I can't remember, the end of June, beginning of July.
But we have had no real new information.
No new application, no...
So the letter in our packet addressed to the Vets Club is dated May 13. And we've heard nothing back since then, Susan?
The letter from them is dated June 19.
The letter from them was June 20, and I think that was around the time of the meeting that they came in.
Okay, got it.
And I think the consensus was, they do a lot of good things for the town. Nothing against them, but they don't meet the criteria for an exempt organization.
Yeah, unfortunately, there were a number of organizations that no longer met that kind of criteria. Any action on that item at this time?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, why don't you come to take a seat and state your name and voice your concern? It's on this matter here for the Vets Club?
No, the question about... I have a question about the charitable exemption, because I came tonight because I'm future business.
You didn't state your name yet, Ken.
My name is Dr. Mary Pearson. I work at Recreation Healing Center. What the RSA 72 says is that in order for an organization to meet charitable exempt status, they have to be a charitable organization or church. There's a couple of different spellouts for what meets that criteria. And they have to be meeting the criteria for their mission statement. That's what the RSA actually says. So they have to be doing what they say they're doing in the charitable exemption. So my question is, on behalf of the veterans, are they not doing what they said in their original statement? In other words, what they filed with the town under charitable status? Are they not doing that?
Each one of these organizations had a different letter from the assessor. And in their case, they were a 501(c)(19) organization, which didn't qualify.
Why does 501(c)(319) not qualify?
It says, "Which means it is not a veterans' organization incorporated by act of Congress or of its departments or local chapters or posts. The general purpose is a nonprofit organization that supports our local community, youth, sports, and academics, et cetera." So the assessor would be the one to answer this better, but that's what's in her letter. They don't quite meet the strict eligibility requirements.
They don't meet the eligibility requirements because they are not a veterans' organization under an act of Congress.
That's what I'm reading here.
Okay. So if that is not correct, then they would be eligible.
Well, that's an assumption. We don't know...
I'm just asking.
I don't know, but that's the criteria for rejecting them. Not that they don't do a lot to service their veteran members. And they do quite a bit, they do a lot of fundraising within the community. That's not a question.
So even though they meet the criteria of what their mission statement is?
Yeah, but I'm not gonna get into a discussion of semantics with you.
No, no, I'm trying to understand what the criteria are so that I can...
7223A will explain to you everything about it.
I've read that.
And they don't fall into that.
Okay.
So they might be nice and give away Easter baskets, but they don't fall into that. So that's because, that's why they're not allowed to have the tax exemption. And it's written in the letter they wrote to us, they understand that they don't fall into that criteria.
I see, okay.
So they have to fall into that criteria for that tax exemption.
Okay.
And they don't.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item next is the assess...
Do we need to vote or do anything on this?
Well, there's...
Is the exemption going to stay?
We should, it's gonna stay the same at this point.
Yeah, no, I'm just, we're solidifying that.
Right, right. I mean, we could take a vote, but they're appealing the decision, but...
You already denied it. It's whether you're gonna uphold that based on anything new that came up.
Thank you, Susan. So that stands. Okay, now let's move on to assessing and building department hours. We have a memo with signs and notice to be posted. Do you wanna come forward?
I would like to review the...
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
I know that Dr. Pearson and Representative Pearson are here. And there's a note on our agenda that said, because Ducks on the Pond is their property.
They'll be up next.
And I just wanna make sure that they know that it's still pending research and that it's gonna be on the August 26th agenda, just in case you're wondering. Which you probably were.
We are.
I would expect so.
Well, my apologies for not recognizing...
I just wanna make sure that they were.
Thank you, Glenn, I appreciate it. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, assessing and permitting hours.
So you had a memo in front of you at the last meeting, and you didn't have time to really take a good look at it. In the meantime, we made, we gave you some signage that we are proposing for that office and an announcement that would go in the website.
Among other places?
In Facebook and wherever to make people aware. So just to make it more clear what the request is.
So I have a few questions to start this off. The assessing window, this says that it would be open on or the assessing clerk would be available on Wednesdays from 8:00 to 4:00 and/or Friday from 8:00 to 9:00 at noon. So what happens? And Friday. What happens on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday are the building hours, building and permitting.
So if somebody comes in with an assessing question, they're not gonna get the answer?
They, that's why we're putting in the information where they can either leave a message or send an email. We're just trying to compartmentalize so that Tori can concentrate on one thing at a time.
No, I understand the time part of it. I just, when I looked at that and saw three days without the availability, not that she...
Well, they're there.
If somebody answers a question, she'd probably answer it.
Right.
But to post the hours in there, and I begin...
And the assessor is there on Wednesdays. The rest of the time, it's people that might come in and wanna do some property research or that sort of thing, and the computer is always there for that.
So going over to the building permit window, Monday, Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday are 8:00 to 4:00. And then Tori is on that window, you know? She's there to answer those questions on those days.
Correct.
So the relevance is that there's somebody there, it's a matter of what the subject is at this point.
She's gonna always be there, it's just which side of the window is she gonna be working on.
Well, that's it. I mean, until we get a person there, which is what we're trying to work on, you know, this is, trying to work that out, I guess.
When do you want this to go into effect?
We were thinking, what, September 3rd after Labor Day?
After Labor Day, after the online permitting has been...
Yep.
And then publicized, so we'd have a couple of weeks to publicize.
Right.
So people would know.
That it's coming.
That it's coming.
Put signage up and... If I'm not explaining it right, come on up.
No, but I think it's gonna be hard to have you there and not accessible. And yet, I'm not opposed to posting hours and try to coordinate it so that you get more concentrated time. I think that's really very important.
Pedro also will still have his office hours, so it's not like the building department is gonna be completely closed down. But if someone comes in with a permit, they might need to send it in an email. We'll get it on the next day.
And I'm concerned about the fact that we're changing over the computers at the same time. And I expect it's gonna be a lot more confusion and questions from the general public. I almost hate to shorten the hours the first couple, three weeks when we implement the new system in the computer.
That's a good point.
And more for that reason. Again, I'm not opposed to restricting because that was very evident how diversified your duties are and splintered its top. I could appreciate that.
The only thing about the new system is that, yeah, that's gonna be a big thing. But they can still come in with a paper permit. It's not either or, they can do it either way until it's more clear to everyone and find out that it's easier to put it in the computer, but...
I think it's gonna, I think that system, as far as Pedro is concerned, will significantly decrease that office track flow when it gets online. But until that gets to that point, as we were saying, that you're gonna need somebody there to help give direction on that.
Right, so maybe push it up till October, like changing this till October to give everybody...
That would be perfect.
Yeah.
You should probably get a lot of questions for the permitting part for that first month.
Yeah.
Because it's software.
And September is coming pretty quickly.
It is. And so, logistically, is there a, because it's a big window, so is there an assessing window?
There are two windows, and there are two curtains.
There are two windows.
So are you going to, because your note here says the curtain for the closed window will be drawn. So is the assessing curtain gonna be drawn during building permit hours, by person? Okay, I just want, trying to get a visual.
Yeah, there's those black curtains that are there.
Right, yeah.
And you can close one side, and there are two openings there, so...
Picture that, Monty Python, say, "Close one, and you go over there," you open it.
It's not gonna be perfect, but we're trying to just...
No, I get it.
Give her some breathing room to get things done.
May I ask if you had considered doing, say, morning as permitting and afternoon as assessing? That way, you could do both things on all of the days as opposed to...
That's really annoying, it's a free-for-all. I have no control. You can't set...
We can't hear you, Tori.
You wanna come up? Hit a button?
Yeah, say your name, hey, tell the audience at home, "Hi, I'm Tori, you're the assessing clerk."
Oh, they know her.
Hi, I'm Tori DeBrowski. I'm the assessing and permitting clerk.
For the moment.
For the moment. Right now, it's a free-for-all. It's everybody coming at me from every direction for every matter. It's not just permitting, it's not just assessing. It's where do I go to register a car? It's, oh, what's going on with the students meeting? What's going on with planning? What's going on in zoning? Because that huge window, it's just, you know, it's almost like I'm the Walmart leader. So anyone coming through, they go through me to get to where they need to go.
And I don't think that's gonna go away. It'll be less, but people come in, they have no idea about town.
We need to put some designated hours, or I gave examples of what other towns do. They, sometimes it's by appointment only. It's to set an expectation, it's to be able to give good service instead of just everything coming in and not being able to get back to people or not being able to do the research that they're asking for or not being able to point people to the resources that are there that people don't even know about and they're not using. The GIS system, property cards that are online, the property files that have been... People have no clue. So you go to a bank and it's not open, you don't expect them to open because you're there and they need money right then and there. So this isn't sustainable, how we've been doing it. It's, you've seen my desk, and that's not perfect.
And your workload, yes.
I should know this answer to this, but when you walk in the doorway downstairs, is there, what is available down there for signage? When you walk, soon as you walk in that door? Besides what's in front of your window, what's the signage in hallway?
It's incorrect. What you see when you walk in, the door, planning's upstairs, but, yeah, mine is downstairs, so...
It's right in the doorway as you walk in. I noticed that the other day, it was manfette.
And then I took down a sign that would point people to clerk this way because it's pointing basically to my window. People don't know it across the hall, and you have three windows. You know what I mean? So it wasn't good signage. We were trying to improve it with, you know, the neon pretty colors when we could have designated hours.
Well, I think we should move to adopt an effective October 1st as in a trial period because we're gonna wanna hear back from you as to how it's working out. Are you being overwhelmed with some more things, you know, you're gonna switch it, whatever. But let's get some feedback from you after it's implemented, October 1st.
We really need to set expectations with the public and do a spread, you know, on Facebook and splash on Facebook. Other towns are doing this because other towns have the same...
They have shortage, right. Short staff, yes.
So I gave you some examples of that. We can't keep doing what we're doing. We just, we can't.
I think we can appreciate that. Thank you.
Any questions or...
I think we're good. Thank you very much for coming in.
So as proposed, put October 1st on the trial period.
Right, we'll need a motion to that effect, please. And a second, Chuck, okay? Comments?
Just a question. How long do you want the trial period to be?
I don't know, I'd say 30 days.
Is that long enough?
I don't know.
Till January 1st.
Maybe till the end of the year.
What would you say?
In a prior meeting, you had decided that it would be okay to close the office so I could take vacation time?
Yes.
How do you think that's gonna go over, having the office closed?
Well, I think, that I don't think we're gonna have a choice about.
Okay.
Okay, I think, I'm not suggesting you need to take your vacation time, okay? Done. And if the closing office to do it, so be it.
But that presents a, like, in your face, we're short staffed. This is what we need to do.
I understand that. We're very well aware of that.
That's why we decided that.
Yeah, I know you are, but the public needs to be aware, this is what we're doing.
That's correct. You're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
So is, will the motion include that the trial period will, or the...
It's up to you guys.
Trial period will be from October 1 to December 31?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So a 90-day trial period.
Okay.
Yep, that sounds good.
Whoa, you got a question?
I was just told that the meeting is not allowed to ask any...
If you can go in there and find out what I did wrong. I hit streaming and I hit recording.
Let me...
Hold on.
I vote yea.
You vote yea, all in favor?
Yea.
Motion carries your name this one. We'll just put a hold until we can figure out if we're broadcasting or not.
We need Adam.
Well, and an Adam backup. It's not just Adam.
Yeah.
We need...
When school starts, I'll call.
Have you parked at the school yet?
I haven't, I'm waiting to, because once the school is in session, probably be...
I wouldn't wait because a lot of those advisors will...
Do they have a fee a night or a party hour if they can do that?
Do they have what?
When they compensate the person running that, is it by the hour or by the night?
I think with Adam it is, but it might need to change with the part timer. You know, X amount of hours or whatever. A fee, a flat fee per broadcast.
Fifty bucks a night, whether it's an hour or three hours. That's what you're reading up to, seven or five a night.
Fifty bucks isn't much. Are we all set?
No, apparently it's not streaming. Phil has taken a look at the instructions to see if he can figure it out.
All I knew was, like, say, hit streaming, start streaming, and it says, "Do you wanna start streaming? Are you sure?" And I said, "Yes."
And if Adam is at home, can you text him and ask him what's going on?
Yeah, I think he's not around, but he said he could take care of it after, so I'm not sure. We'll try.
Oh, okay, so he may not even be home. Do you wanna stop or proceed?
No, proceed.
Proceed, okay.
I mean, if we have a good broadcast.
Might be bare-bones minutes.
Okay, so then we have policy 1602 retention disposition of non-public meeting minutes.
Yeah, it's Danny. We talked about that minutes disposition? Did you do the parking policy thing?
The first one is...
Oh, that's retention and disposition of the non-public minutes in the meetings? Is this some of the stuff here?
Those are the, that's the policies, right? Is that what we're up to?
Yes.
Yeah.
You put a policy in the folder in there.
We looked at them last week and our last time, and there was a few amendments which are in the next draft, which I think, one of them you actually signed last time, but the corrections are in there. Define the, sign the final copy, which is in the orange.
So that's a matter of signing, because we've already taken action.
You've already talked about them. If you're okay with what you did last time, and you have nothing further, right?
You don't have a list of what we did last time?
I think I can possibly remember, but I...
They're incorporated.
For the non-public, we had said that there was a discussion on what do we do with the electronic files? So... So we added in here, electronic minutes will be password protected and the file will be stored on a thumb drive in a locked cabinet at the town hall. So that was the change that we added to account for electronic ones. But I, I do have a question because we had a conversation and Stacy Dion had said that the, um, it has to kinda do, it's tangentially, well, about minutes. The Wage Matrix was a joint committee between budget and select board. And then the question was about not, where do the men, where do the minutes, where are they stored? So, I mean, so that's a thing I think we probably need clarification on.
Because this policy, I think, says that they fall under the select board.
Right.
That's where they should be.
Right.
Yes.
So what's the issue?
Well, Stacy believes that it's not a select board, that, that for the Wage Matrix, it was not a select board group, it was a joint group. And I think Susan found minutes to the contrary, that it was a select board.
That it was formed by the select board with, with other parties involved, but.
So you just remind me as to where, and, and, because I just don't recall, where does she think the minutes should go? If, if the selectmen don't keep them, Susan keeps ours?
We never decided because we couldn't get past where, who owned it.
The minutes are being kept by the selectmen, that answers the question.
Right, so current, so they need to be kept with the select.
Right, right now they're in HR.
And, and my recollection is clear that it forms with the select board because we wanted to work with the budget committee. In getting a settlement of what we agreed to, we wanted to keep our budget as presented, and in to do that, we agreed as a board to bring on, to formulate the Wage Matrix Committee. To review wages, how the committees develop a matrix.
Yep.
So it really did originate with the select board.
Yes, yes, and the non-public should, minutes should be with the select.
Stay with the select board.
Do you want a motion to that effect?
Please.
So moved.
In a second, thank you, discussion, all in favor, yes.
Aye.
Unanimous.
So I think that is the only discussion on that policy that won't change.
I, I didn't hear about how it's going to stay for the electronic office minutes.
Oh, you didn't hear it? Okay, so, um, that the minutes will be password protected, because it's for non-public, right? So the minutes will be password protected and the file will be stored on a thumb drive in a locked cabinet at the town hall.
So I checked with Block Five on that.
Um, and they said that we should not be using a thumb drive because they die and all the information will be gone. Okay. And that a computer should be purchased, um, like a laptop that any board could use because they should have, then they could get on our server. So no personal computer would be able to be, have access to our server, but if we were, and this is what other towns do, get, I say a laptop because a desktop wouldn't work. But a laptop so that it could be used and anybody could have, um, an account and login to any computer, a town computer. So we could have one laptop for boards or two laptops for the various boards that stay here in the, in, be locked. Um, and then the board chair would have access to unlock that cabinet where they are. And then each board member can sign on with their own login and have access to file on the server so that it's saved. So, so we wouldn't even need the, we would only need a lock cabinet for sealed minutes, like paper.
For the smaller committees.
They have a laptop and they have access to the shared drive, then we don't need, they just need to.
They wouldn't use a thumb drive, it would be, it would be on our server, it would get to be saved on our server.
All right, so we gotta make a change.
I'm gonna need spare computers you got downstairs, Danny.
We don't, we have to buy them.
It would only be for the smaller committees, I mean, if they're under the purview of the select board, they're gonna be in the server in my office, right? So I don't need a separate laptop.
No, if, if they say a separate, then you do a separate, but I'm sure we could pick up, um, a tablet, doesn't have to be full blown desktop or laptop, right? Can we get a tablet with a keyboard and?
Um, I'd have to ask them.
Okay.
I'm not sure, um, but they definitely said a laptop because then each person would, because the Lock Five would be the one setting it up.
Yeah.
And each person that, for each committee would be able to have a login, just like I have my own login for the computer, they would have an email login.
Yep.
And they could log in, they ended up going into Danny's office, which is, say, for some reason, and said, can I use your laptop, your computer? They could log in with their login and access their information.
Right, but because, I'm sorry, but because the, this computer, if you will, isn't gonna be doing high powered computations, it could possibly be something like a Chromebook or some, something that.
Right, I'll ask.
Something low level, it wouldn't cost too, too much money.
Exactly, that's, that's where I was going with, I don't think we need to have a full blown laptop because those things can run rocket ships.
No, and I think Stacy's concern was, um, because it says town clerk keeps like budget pointy minutes, but if you're not available, her, the, her whole thing was, how do I get to it if it's off hours? So if it's on a laptop that's available, then they can.
Yeah, so that solves the problem.
If they have the password.
Yeah, yeah, um, the reason they say, they, I, I do remember now, the reason they said laptop is also because they could use it to broadcast their meetings. So like budget committee or even conservation or heritage, if they, if they wanted to put something up on the screen, um, Apple computers don't work with our system. And so it would have to be Microsoft, I'm not sure, I'd ask, I'll ask Block Five about Chromebooks or whatever, but I'm not sure.
I, I only use that word as an example, something that, something that would be less than a full blown.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if it'll work, you know. So what do we do in the interim, because that's gonna take a while to.
Well, it should be on the budget.
Right, so.
Well, I just wanna know how many, how many of these committees are affected by this? I mean, are you saying that like the select board minutes should be on a laptop now?
No, 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 no.
And if it's one of the ones that falls under the purview of the select board, it's not anything new. But if you've got like conservation or somebody that wants some non-public minutes, then you're talking about a laptop.
I think it's a different topic because you have sensitive issues being, I'm sorry, I did, but you have sensitive issues being discussed, you get into non-public. Otherwise at public meetings, it doesn't, it's fine.
Correct.
But a conservation commission is not likely to have the sensitivity of the Wage Matrix.
Well, that's what I mean, but the Wage Matrix is falling under select board.
But I think it was just budget committee and, and I, I think it was really just the budget committee, if for some reason they need to, but they fall under town clerk. And they're concerned that they can't access it off hours, so it's really probably just the budget committee?
Right, so, but are you calling the Wage Committee under Budget Committee?
No, the Wage Matrix is under.
But if they have their own non-publics, that's where they would need the laptop that they could also use at their meeting?
Right.
Okay, just wanna be clear.
Yeah, so, so what do we do in the interim since we have to wait? As far as this policy goes, how are we saying we're doing electronic minutes? Because right now we just wrote it for a thumb drive, but, but we're getting word that that's not a good solution.
Maybe the thumb drive until you have the laptop.
Yeah, I got the email back from August 2nd and I sent it out.
So maybe we do that and then once we figure out the next solution, because six months on a, on a thumb drive is not a problem? Yeah, okay, so.
Yeah, it's a way for any, because the committees do their own minutes.
Yeah, right.
So, and it needs to be stored somewhere, so they have a file on the server, that's how it's stored.
So when we get to that, we can just amend this, but for now it's good as is. So what we changed on that was a few, we added a couple areas for the parking areas for the car top boat launch and the state shed. And then we took out, it's a one-time fee instead of renewable every year, right? So we took that out and, um, also removed the thing, um, that said vehicles without a resident parking sticker that matches the, just the license plate. So we deleted that, so we just, um, made it a one-time fee, two dollars essentially, and added a couple places for a resident parking area. That's it?
Any other questions? Adopted as approved?
Yes, second.
Discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, you need a list. Now, under new business, oh, one of our favorite topics, plow drivers insurance. Director Coombs, would you like to come forward and address the board on this issue?
No.
I gave you the, I gave you the minutes from last year, we found those today, so.
Because here we are, a year later.
We pretty much kicked it down the road last year.
About the same thing going on. Yes, sir.
Um, I mean, I guess everybody was able to get those minutes from last time where this was discussed and, um.
Are we in the same position, I guess that's the bottom line.
Yeah, I, I, I can't find any neighboring, and again, I have not gone out and seen if they've changed their insurance requirements, but Epping, Danville, Hampstead, East Kingston, Newton, Plastow, and Southampton. Do not require this of any of their contract plow drivers, this additional insurance.
Can we make a deal?
Always.
I have a hard time with the six month stipend regardless of what they do, I really do. Can we move back that to five months?
I think it's at five months now.
I believe it says six somewhere, I just saw.
Can I make a question, have a question?
Sure.
My, my question fills on the insurance.
Yep.
Um, just from somebody that deals with a lot of insurance, I think the town has to inquire with our insurance company.
So we did.
Is it subcontractor?
We did inquire with Primex.
Okay, so we have subcontractors in this town, there's no requirement that they have to be insured?
They are insured and we are named as additionally insured on their policies.
Okay.
However, there was an additional requirement being proposed for, screw this up, but another type of insurance. It was an indemnification, I'm sorry. Um, how it was explained to me by an insurance agent is that's what you would want, is if you hired a landscape company to make sure that this town hall parking lot was clear. So that if they did not maintain this parking lot as clear and someone slipped and fell, that would be their liability. So the insurance that was being proposed would cover that liability to the contractor. What the insurance agent said to me is if we are directing them when to go out on the roads, which I do, I'm out running the roads, and when it gets to a point that it's in need of attention. That's when we notify the contract plow drivers to go out and do their routes. Now, there was some question as to whether that makes them employees or subcontractors at that point, and I think that question is still out there. And it's probably something I should follow up with on NHMA, just to make sure of that, but it is how all the other towns do it, under their setup. So we're not just leaving it open like, hey, you've got Ball Road, keep it open, it's go out, I want you to just put salt on it. That's, we give them that level of instruction on how we wanna treat it because they're using our materials and their vehicles, so. What was being proposed is basically insurance that you would have for someone who's just left to their own devices. I mean, if someone's driving like a maniac down the road and runs into someone, or it's individual actions that cause an accident or, or something like that. That's current, the insurance requirements that we have now cover that action. And what Primex did say, regardless of whether we took this additional insurance on or not, they would cover the town in the event of litigation.
The town would always be named, no matter what, it's not.
Get the deepest pockets, they're coming for us.
Exactly.
Um, so with regards to your earlier statement, the biggest snowstorm we had this year was on April 5th. So do we wanna cut April out?
Where, where does it start, no, September?
No, it starts in November.
I don't know, I just had to voice my displeasure.
I, and I, I'm right there with you, but if you want a guy to answer the phone and show up when you call him, when that storm shows up on April 5th or November 27th.
Goes up, does come down. So we, we have a shortage of employees now, it will turn around the time and there'll be plenty. It's a terrible thing to say, but it goes in cycles.
So one of the things that I included on the Wage Matrix study with the comparable towns was what they pay their wing plow drivers and their one ton drivers. And I would tell you that we are grossly behind in what we pay both of those.
Congratulations.
I, so this is my little nugget that I can throw to them, but hey, at least you get a.
Where, where, where did this requirement come from? I'm trying to remember how this came about.
What they do, the, oh, that's a deal from Richard St. Holter Davis.
No, 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 the, um, the insurance requirement. Yeah, where did this come about? I don't remember, it, was it a, is it a Primex requirement, are we requiring it, where did this come about?
I think it came from the board, I don't know, the board member was very concerned about liability. Paula, did you wanna add something, do you remember something I don't?
Um, I was questioned last year, so then I called Primex and this is, they gave me specific instructions and they gave me a sample contract. So I updated it to be our town information.
So, uh, are, are they saying it's a statewide, statewide requirement, or we reached out because we think we needed it? I think that's what I'm trying to understand. I, I understand they gave you a contract, but is it because it's required for every, every person, or because we asked the question?
We never had contracts for our snow plow drivers. So I called and I said, we need a contract, because it was my first year that I was like doing it. I said, we should have a contract with the plow drivers, we had nothing in writing saying that any of what they were gonna do or anything.
Okay.
So, um, after we decided that, I called Primex to see what the requirements were for what plow drivers needed for insurance to be covered. And that's, everything, I have it all in writing, is what they had told us to have, um, and they said what their minimums were for, if it was a million dollar policy or two million or whatever.
Right, okay.
And, and so the outcome of that was that everybody is required to have a million dollar policy now, and the town is named as additionally insured. And that is explicitly spelled out in the contracts that we did sign with the plow contract, contractors. So I, I feel we've met that need, this other insurance, I, I.
They had required, um, it was vehicle insurance, but I wasn't prepared for this, so I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that, I think, I think we're comfortable with it being named, uh, co-insurers on their policies. Am I correct, ladies and gentlemen?
Because that's what we did last year, right?
That's exactly what we did last year.
You said they all signed that, they added the town?
Yeah, we, there were two contractors that were not able to meet that requirement and we were, they were replaced.
Okay.
So.
Fair enough.
All right.
I do feel we're covering the minimum for the town to address the liability, um.
Thanks, Paula, I'll sit. Okay, good to go, I'm gonna get something else.
So that's a closed issue then?
Yep, it's done, yep.
And then we're keeping the, the retention the same, like what, what do, is it six months?
He says we do it five months.
Okay, all right.
I thought you said it was, is it five or six?
Is it November to?
November, December, January, February, March, April, six months. Could you check on that, because you would make me really happy if you got rid of one of those months.
It is, so it's six months.
November, June.
Two April or two April?
It's April, six months.
Three April.
You can go to the fifteenth or the, eh, never mind, never mind, it's worth a shot. Okay, item next. Uh, proposal for ongoing PFA support, that's the same. That's the Sanborn Head contract in our packets.
Yeah, that's just for you to look at. That's there going forward to continue doing the study. I believe it's within our budget.
Papa?
No, they are through contracted services, I believe, and that goes into 2025. So I think we looked at the numbers briefly. Should work.
Yeah, the grant is for... Specifically for the installation of systems.
Of the systems.
And the... And the... At one year of maintenance and testing and so forth, it's required for those installations.
Right.
But the other work that Sanborn Head has been doing for us is a separate...
It's a continued site investigation.
It's more than... Yeah, it's more than that.
That's fine, I got that. Begs the question if the new contract is for $99,000, $100,000, and we had $200,000 and we thought it was probably going to be in that grant.
And it will be.
The... If you include all of the contingent items in the contract with the WaterTechs, it comes up very close to what the grant amount is.
Really?
Yeah.
So the week the paid contract is isn't reality. I mean, I don't...
Well, Sanborn Head did an analysis of the three bids that we got, and when they... And they gave us a sheet and a spreadsheet, and they showed that when you compared apples to apples from the bids, they were all very close, and they were all essentially very close to our...
Awarded.
To our awarded amount.
Yeah. Yeah, the bid included a set amount for the known quantities, and then there's a bunch of contingent items that they quoted per item price, and we had to calculate that. That was over and above.
Please. Won't bite.
So Chuck, the illusion when we looked at them quickly, that one of them was significantly less than the other, was not real.
Okay, back to that. That's the illusion I was under then.
Well, and we all were, which is why... Which is why we turned it over to our consultant to make sure that they did the analysis and gave us the review and the result. And the result was that they all came in very, very close.
Even though it looked like there was a big disparity, there really wasn't when everything was added up. Okay, we're set for that. You haven't seen it yet?
It's not been signed, but when it is, which will be this week. We've got that in front of you, the agreement.
Yeah.
And I'll make sure you have it. With WaterTechs, yeah.
Both of them, yeah.
We had to... It was just out to everybody to sign. Right, so it's coming your way.
Okay, and the next is the... Sign notice for the award to WaterTechs, correct?
Right. No, no, we just... We just did that, I thought.
No, that was Sanborn Head.
No, you've got in your orange folder is the actual paperwork that came in today from WaterTechs for the award of the contract. We had the first two pages last week.
That's not what this is.
No, that's not.
Right, that's something different. So we just need your signature on that, Ellie. You have...
And that's in the orange.
That's in the orange. I just wanted to make sure you're aware.
Okay.
Right, what we're looking at in the packet here, in our packets, blue folders, is a letter that Susan has drafted to property owners along with a... An agreement that...
That they need to sign.
That the... Anyone receiving one of these systems needs to sign, which gives...
Yes, the access agreement.
Which is the access agreement. It gives permission for our vendor to go onto the property, install the system. It also says that we're responsible for it for a certain period of time. It also says that at some point, if and when PFAS levels drop below problem levels, that the town would no longer be responsible for that system or for maintaining it, and so at that point, the system could either be removed, or if the resident wishes to keep it at their own expense for maintaining it, they could do that.
So this was going to the people who don't have a system. What about the six houses that have one? We were going to come up with a different...
We don't have that one yet. This is the only one. I was waiting for that back from the attorney. This is includes... This one includes all her comments and changes. The only question was under four, I think, P. There's a unfinished sentence there. And in talking to Verdantis, we're not forcing them to remove anything. We don't care if we get it back. So some of this language doesn't matter. It's just if they want to keep it, we have to sign an agreement with them for them to transfer responsibility.
And have them senile liability for it.
Right, so under P, I think we're just going to end the sentence before that comma.
I'm P. Four P.
P, four P.
It's on the back page.
So that's the only thing that I think is not. I sent it back to Verdantis, and they agreed with everything the attorney said, and she said, "Well, this doesn't make sense. We don't... We've never asked for them to be returned." So I think if we just end that sentence, that should be okay. You can take a better look at it if you like.
So the other thing, Susan, the... This page ends, but it looks like there might be more, and there's no signature pages.
Oh, I probably didn't copy the signature pages for you because I was just trying to...
Okay, so there is a signature page for both the town and...
In the original, there is, yeah.
And the resident.
Devil's advocate, right? Three-page contract signs, there'll be people in there with some things in there that's like you say, if it goes down, we don't have to maintain it and do things like that. What if somebody doesn't want to sign the letter? I mean, doesn't agree to... We'll let them in, but we're not going to agree to... I mean, all of this.
Basically, they're just...
They don't sign, they don't get it.
Okay.
There's nothing too controversial in there, I don't think, but...
I think there might be people who might want to sign it, but we briefly talked about that last time if they don't want to sign it.
It's to protect the homeowner as much as the town.
But if they don't sign, we can't help them.
Right, so once this is all set and ready to go, Susan and I briefly chatted about it, and maybe also, Ellie, I don't recall, but this document is important enough that I think we should be transmitting it by certified mail to each of the homeowners.
Agreed, totally agreed.
So that we have a way of tracking it, because we don't want this getting lost, and we don't want anybody saying, "Oh, well, we never got that." And we need these back. We're going to need them back quickly because until we have this, we can't...
Can't start.
We can't start work.
So if somebody signed one tomorrow and brought it in, we could start. All the other contracts are signed, the company is ready to go, all that.
Yep. Yeah, we gotta sign it. Yeah, we're ready to rock.
And, you know, three people send it back in, and then they say, "Oh, well, probably we're not going to know that on Thursday or something."
Well, there is a schedule that the contractor will be putting together once the... Everything's signed and they have it. In their proposal to us, they did say that once they were given the award, and I'm remembering, trying to remember this, but I think they said that they should be able to either start or certainly start the installations within 30 to 45 days. It was quick.
Yeah, it was a short turnaround, yeah.
I mean, we would have to coordinate with the water delivery company, too, to stop water delivery to the houses once their systems are turned on. So there's some coordination's going to have to occur there.
Right, yep.
And I don't know, do the homeowners like schedule their own water delivery? How does that work?
They deal directly with the water company.
Right, so there's going to have to be coordination there.
We'll have to help them. Just saying.
For me, I would order the water for another two, three months, once the town's willing to pay for it.
That's my point. That's my point. Okay. So access agreements on the roll. Next item, the 79E covenant is to be signed for the Sanborn Seminary. Keep that rolling. They everything recorded with the Rockingham County deeds. It's there. A couple of things that I have added to mine. One is the capital improvement plan from the planning board. Oh, I'm still going to board mid-business. I'm going to go back. All right, all right.
Oh, I saw the first one. No, I'm sorry. I tell you, it's not low.
These... There were two items I had that not necessarily... Were added in, they're not on your agenda, they're on mine. And one was to remind you that you received a copy of the capital improvement plan that we will be discussing in our August 24th meeting.
Planning board did. Lynn Merrill brought hers in today. I thought we would do that at the next meeting when everybody is here, because you need them from a bunch of boards. They have to be in by the end of the month, so for the budget committee.
Right, what the planning board has sent out is the request for departments to provide input on what they are anticipating for capital needs. So we're one of those boards. But it's also a requirement of the planning board that the departments talk to us so that we know the big picture of what is going on.
And you need to sign off on all of them.
And we need to sign off.
And Lynn's is for the planning board, for the master plan.
Yeah, so they've got on the 26th, which is a department head meeting. Perfect opportunity for them. I had a chance to see it earlier last week, and wait to see apartment, highway department. They're going to spend a lot of money next year. Or hope to anyways.
Well, it's a six-year horizon plan, so hopefully it's not all next year.
He's got 80% of it in year one. Just saying.
All right.
Just saying. Sorry he's left so I could remind him of that.
Well, he'd love to hear that.
I may go on tomorrow night. And also, it's... I know, that was in our folder, there's a letter, a request, a request from Melissa Mann in the library director to... In support of another grant that she's going for. So I'm assuming that's going to be okay for all of us to sign.
I worked with Melissa on that and just made a few tweaks from the last letter that we did for the other grant.
Okay. So now I'll open it at floor up for public comment. Mrs. Baker, come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Everyone comfortable in their new chairs?
They'll love our new chairs.
So my question is, because I just did this when I had the opportunity, do I have the board's approval to get rid of all these other ones? All those red ones? All of those ones?
The red ones only. We need the black ones for meetings.
I beg your pardon?
The red ones on wheels for sure. There's not even a question. You might want a couple of the softer ones for the hallway.
Okay.
You know, the strategic places, but the black ones need to stay, even the hard ones, because we use those for meetings.
You're not going to get rid of those.
The black ones in the audience, for audiences.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the ones pushed over there.
Oh, those get rid of.
On wheels and all these.
Those big high-back chairs.
What about the executive ones? Do you want to get rid of those, too?
Do you want them?
I don't want to sit in them.
You can offer them to other departments.
So I was going to... I actually talked to Phil about it today. I was going to offer... He might want to take some for his thing. Yeah, so he's going to look at taking some. We were going to look at taking some for the elections.
Yeah.
And then whatever's left, I was going to like post it on my Town Clerks Association, see if another town wants them.
Okay.
See if we can get rid of them instead of having to pay to get rid of them.
I think that's a great idea. Is there any objections from the board? Thank you.
You're very welcome. And then one last thing is I have emptied the vault downstairs. As you can see, we're making progress. I have asked my source for some new file cabinets, because they're... All of them are broken, and they're very deep, so you can't get in there and work in. And I have talked to Phil about painting it and getting a new light so we can actually see in there. So I am making progress on that. So this Thursday, we'd like to have all this stuff marked, whether it's going to be kept or shredded, and then I'll keep a log of what we shred, and Phil's guys will take it out for the Saturday shredding event.
There's a couple of things we had some questions on. I went through the ZBA, and I took some samples. They're all in the property files already, most of it in the minutes, of course. So I'm not worried about those, but there's some stuff that it's like every map and lot... Every lot's got a map in there that corresponds to the tax map. I have no idea if we need... I don't think we need to keep those, but could the records retention committee take a look at some of this stuff? Or just look at the schedule and make sure that we're not throwing away something we shouldn't? That's all.
Okay, so the record retention committee consists of, by law, the town clerk, the treasurer, who probably doesn't even realize she's on... And someone from your board. So give me who you want.
Okay. Well, just a suggestion. Because I'm looking through, I'm like, okay, and I have the schedule.
And it's not like we... If we're in doubt of anything, we can keep it until we figure it out, but if we can get rid of the bulk of it before... For this weekend, that would be fantastic.
And I think a lot of it is ready. Glenn went through a whole bunch, and I'll let ZBA can go.
And the conservation, that pile over there is ready to go. So we're making progress.
A lot of these are tax maps?
No, the tax maps are in my office.
They'll be in your vault, right?
Yeah. Those are just property maps, and Phil actually asked not to get rid of... He would like to go look through it before they're gotten rid of, too. And I am going to ask everyone to sign off to say, "Yep, I'm good with it being destroyed."
Okay.
I'm going to kind of tack... Well, tax insert. I know that I would like to put something in the tax insert, all about volunteerism to just... I mean, we need volunteers. Everybody needs volunteers in town, and I know that Phil already talked to you about MS4, to put a page rate, to have half a page, or the one side of it.
Right, so we can only put one agent?
Yes.
But I would caution the board to look at the RSA again about what can go be included with the tax bill and make sure, because it's your decision. I want you to be comfortable, and I'll give you... I'll send you the RSA.
Yes, please do.
And you guys can vote on what goes in there and what goes... What doesn't.
Okay.
I'll put whatever you want in, but it's going to be your responsibility, what goes in there, not mine.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate all your efforts. This is a big project. Public comment? Anyone else?
Come on, Rick.
Not tonight, okay. So for correspondence, we have a couple of requests for solar exemptions and an excavation tax for our 1930, and an intent to cut for our 35 block five.
Our five block five, where's that?
I don't know.
Dora Road. Actually, that came up. Phil's not here. The person, the owner of the property called me because he said he was concerned because he... It's on the Class 6 road, that he might need permission from the town, but he already talked to Phil, and Phil gave me an answer that it's... I can't remember the entire answer, but it's okay to sign. So I have it in an email. I can send it later. Just a matter of him being able to access the property from that Classic. That was the only issue.
Yeah, okay. We got a copy of the Department Transportation Block Grant for the coming year, or this past year, which...
I sent that around to everybody.
And let's see. Human Services also sent in a report of what's going on this past month. This is capital improvement. And so approval of the minutes for July 29th and August 5th.
Don't move.
For public and non-public.
Don't move.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Approval of changing Tori Dubrowski's job title to assessor slash permit coordinator? Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Anything else that I forget? I have nothing.
Contact the DOT and tell them Mr. Wilson's on.
I know.
Yeah, well, we'll let Mrs. Ayer know that, and she can yell at them a little bit. He's been gone for quite a while. Okay, if there is no further business to call before us, we are adjourned at 8:28. Okay, if there is no further business to come before us, we are adjourned at 8:28.